We're ready over there. We've got thumbs up, so we're good to go. We'll call our meeting to order. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes. I would like to amend the agenda to add, um, under communications, to hear from Steve.
Steve Weber.
Steve Weber from Consume who would like to address us.
Motion is supported. Are there any other comments or questions? Anybody else? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Looks like it's passed and we have an agenda. Role has been taken. Now, if everyone would please rise and join us in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So now we entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 11, 2023 regular meeting.
Support.
Got motion and support. Are there any comments, questions, additions, motions, corrections? Anything else? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. We approve the minutes. Under communications, Mr. Weber, reporting for the best commission.
Statement, name and address?
Yes, please.
My name is Steve Weber. I reside 1136 Charleston Drive, St. Charles, Illinois. I'm here to speak on behalf of Consume Cannabis. As you know, we've been an operator, a compliant operator in Alma for the past two years. And I know that it's taken a long time to get to this point. I'm here to just obviously say thank you for being patient and allowing this to get to this point. What I'm asking for is full support of the ordinance. And I'm also asking that, if possible, I don't know if it's possible tonight, but if it is possible, if, um, if it's, if somebody would be able to potentially discuss and make a motion to maybe get us approved tonight, if it's possible. If it's not, I understand it took another couple of weeks for the next meeting. But I just want to say, you know, thank you once again. We've been stewards, good stewards of the city. We want to continue to obviously operate in town. And definitely in reading the literature, I'm a huge, huge support of making sure that the barriers to entry are real for everybody. We have, with including Alma, we have six stores total in Michigan. And we've been in multiple cities that are very, you know, extremely competitive marketplaces. And we have seen many scenarios where stores are, you know, halfway complete, projects are halfway complete because a lot of operators don't really have the true financial wherewithal to stand up a building, hire staff, and then continue operating it. Obviously, we've proven that we're able to do that. So I'm in strong support of the 110% cost of, you know, surety bond, performance bonds, who make sure that any operators that do show up have to prove that they're able to operate in the city. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up for new data hearings, and we are to hold a public hearing to receive comments on a proposed application for a public gathering spaces initiative, community development block grant from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation to be used for improvements to the Riverwalk and Pavilion at Riverside Park. Your pleasure.
Moved to open the public hearing.
Support.
Motion is support. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Okay. Motion is passed. Or excuse me, any opposed? Say no. Do that. Hearing none, so the motion is passed and we have a hearing.
Yes, yep. Yep, sure thing. Um, uh, this again is at Riverside Park. Commissioner May, remember, we did put in a grant application to the Spark funding, which we didn't receive them. This is the same project. This came about the same kind of thing that the Spark monies coming from the federal government has allocated certain dollars to the states through the recovery monies. And the state of Michigan is trying to get that money spent in positive ways throughout the, throughout the state of Michigan. They've used NDNR for some, some projects and then the next opportunity is coming up here very soon. And then the M E D C, they're in the game here to look at some public spaces. Went through the webinar on this particular program initiative. And it made sense for a project that we don't have underway, i.e., obviously you think about the Parker Park, maybe that, but that one's already underway. This is not underway. The project had to be a gathering space and adjacent in or adjacent to a downtown district. So obviously, this is adjacent to our D V A district right across the river is where downtown authority district is. And we have a pedestrian bridge that actually connects, we have an actual connection to the downtown and, and the park system. What we've put together, and you've seen these numbers before with the Spark grant, but the overall project to redo the deck, the railings, the fencing, take care of the pavilion there to make it usable, the new picnic tables, cementing such as trash receptacles and some lights. We're looking at $1,015,666. That includes engineering, so that's everything included there. So, but underneath this grant, as opposed to Spark, Spark didn't require a match, this, this initiative requires a 10% match. So the commission, if we were to receive that, and that's what we're talking about tonight, that we would make available a 10% match for that in the amount of $101,566. Again, we saw this as an opportunity that it's a short window that they provided for this. But we thought we should get this in there since we've had this project on our books. It's in our, our park master plan to redo this, this area. And so we talked, did talk about this project last night with the Parks Committee. And they did pass a, a motion to, you know, proceed with this with the approval of this board. This board is the one that's ultimately responsible to oversee the project. And if we do get it, to provide the local match for those dollars. So with that, I guess I'd open it up to any, any questions from the commission and, and the comments from the public.
Commissioners, any comments, questions?
I just know that that park is used very much, so this would be, this would be a great asset if we were able to do this. I grab flooding and needs some assistance.
Anybody else? One thing did come to my mind, there's a substantial number of the infrastructural repairs. My question, when I see that, do we have a dangerous situation? I mean, I don't think anything ticked off, but.
No, it's, it's not. It's just that it needs to be replaced. So if we were going, it does make sense just to take the decking off and then put a new deck on it. It's at that point where if you're going to do that, from a cost standpoint, you need to.
Just while you're kind of opening up.
Yeah, that's replace it. No, it's not unsafe.
It's certainly not unsafe if we had an issue that we could address.
No, if it was, we would definitely have it cordoned off.
All right. Any members of the public would like to address the commission on this topic? Okay, it sounds like not many, so entertain a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
So moved. Support.
Motion is supported on the table. Any comments or questions? Last chance. Hearing none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. Repose the hearing. And is this on, did you vote on later? Just support it or?
Actually, Greg, you know, I don't think I, it's on the agenda. We will need a, no, I apologize. We will need a motion to, um, from the commission to submit the grant and to make available the 10% match.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Should we do that in our new business then?
Let's do that. Yeah, let's do that.
All right.
Business.
Item two under hearings, we need to set a public hearing for Tuesday, May 28, 2023 at 6:00 P. M. Or as soon thereafter as the agenda will allow, to consider a special assessment role for unpaid charges for innoxious weed cutting, sidewalk replacement, and utility billing charges for 2022. Your pleasure.
Move to set the hearing.
Motion is support. Comments or questions? Pretty routine. We've done this before many times. So all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. We will set the hearing. We want to add on a request for purchases. First up, we consider a resolution to approve a request for purchase in the amount of $269,292 to the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority for renewal of the city's liability and property insurance coverage for July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. Your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Support.
Motion is support. Comments or questions? Do you want to see background first or?
Sure. Yeah, sure. This is something that we do every year. And this is our insurance policy for all our parks, this building, any structure they have in, in the community. Not just for in case they were damaged due to weather or any other things. That folks, if there's somebody that is hurt, that, that stuff is covered also. This also includes any equipment that we have in our, in our inventory is on this also. Something if they caught fire or something along those lines was damaged in some way, that the insurance covers that. The motion they have on the floor right now is for a one year from July, this July through June of next year, '24. Um, M M R M A did provide an opportunity for a two-year agreement with them. And then there, in that two-year, it would cap the two-year agreement at no more than 6% in the next, in the next year. We don't have to do that, but that was something they offered, so we thought we'd bring that to the commission's attention. Um, as you can see from the note, our increase from last year was 2% and then the year before that was 1.5%. And things have gone up. Obviously, the cost to replace things has gone, has gone up, so. They were happy with premiums. But that's up to the commission. We can proceed with our year-to-year or we could consider doing a two-year. And then next year would be an automatic renewal, but, and then there's a, the ceiling in there of not more than 6% increase. But they still provide all the information, obviously.
Was the 6% increase, 2%, the 2% we're getting this year and then capped at four next year?
No, it'd be capped at six.
Capped at six for the second, so two this year and capped at?
It, it might not hit six, but it caps it.
But we're not agreeing to six.
No, no, no. It's a not to exceed amount.
If I may, Mr. City Manager, I would just, just add that on that note, one thing to keep in mind is that obviously, hopefully no claim is made, but if a claim were made, then the insurance rates could go higher than what we just discussed. And so I think that's part of the benefit of capping at six is the, the rates that the city manager were discussing, I think are just the natural increases in the premiums. But if, if a claim were made, then potentially the rates would go higher. So that's the benefit, I think, of, of the 6% cap.
And there isn't a clause that says if you make a claim that they don't have to honor the 6%?
No, according to the agreement, for the second year of this agreement, the contribution level may be increased, but not more than 6%. Contribution level shall mean the member's total annual contribution to M M R M A less that portion of contribution to the Michigan Catastrophic Claims Association and other state mandated charges, and also less than the portion of the contribution which funds the payment of losses and expenses falling in with the member's self-insured retention. So it basically like this year was a, was a 2% increase. Like next year, attorney saying if we had something, you know, big happen, that we were locked in at no more than 6%. Say it did go up, actually, if they were to just do it normally, say it went to 12%. This holds them at that.
This is a gamble.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, and it's one of those things, yes. That's when, yeah.
And it's sort of, sort of a gamble for them too. Obviously, they've, they've run the numbers and this is where they feel that they can make a profit.
And insurance companies are very, very good at numbers. Very good.
They have the actuarial tables down.
Yes, they do.
But if you don't feel comfortable with that, like I said, the motion on the table is for the one year like we have done for many episodes.
Is this pool, one, I mean, certain pools you're, you're purchasing groups like this, you get a risk premium shared back to you if the fund doesn't actually use the money? Is this one of those pools that pays us back?
Yes, we, we received funds in the past.
Last year was $93,000, but they haven't determined what this year is going to be.
So the actual end of, because it's based on probably a number of last 10 years or whatever, that number gets changed all the time. Okay. And we've been consistently with these guys for a long.
A long time, long time. So that's up to the board. At least they, they offered that.
Who made the motion? Mayor? Was it? Was it Roger?
I think I did.
Roxanne?
It was Roxanne and Roger supported.
Would you care to change your motion or not? I just give you the option here.
Sure, I'll change it to the two-year agreement.
I would second that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Like I said, just to, I can see Roxanne has a little apprehension to that. They, they do provide us the information of why, whatever next year's will be, why they're raising the percentage they are. So we do have an opportunity.
So it's not them just saying 5.9%?
Yeah, they're, they're saying, oh, we, we got them for six automatically. No, that's not what I'm seeing. We can always, like I said, clerk or myself can reach back out to them saying, hey, what is this? And why do we have such an increase?
We have a history.
Yes.
They treat us fairly and have for a number of years. I don't think there's a huge downside to doing this.
106% of $270,000 is $286,000. So I mean, that's not, that's, I'm, I'm comfortable with going with that for a year off from now. That's the cap at $286,000.
And that's a 270. And that would be worst case scenario. Yeah, right.
Do we know what our average year-over-year increase has been? It's been, it's been around that.
It was one and a half two years ago, 2% this year.
2% this year.
It's contract inflation. They haven't been excessive.
Okay.
I, I just think the, I have an opinion, obviously, one way or the other. I just, the benefit to the, to the city would be that if a claim were made, the increase would be more than 6%, almost certainly. So that's, that's the, that would be the benefit is, is.
And it's a short-term benefit, quite honestly. If the, if the pool loses a lot of money and has a horrible year, you're going to pay for it in succeeding years. Yes. You're in this risk pool. You're sharing your risk with everybody else. And I think they, I can't imagine not treating everyone fairly. I don't know that. I did an investigation, but I'm sure they treat everybody fairly that's in the pool. And, you know, we're all going to pay if everybody has a bad year. That's just the way insurance works.
Yes.
That's the people in Florida. They're paying dearly for their insurance now. Okay, so we do have a motion and support on the table. Are there any additional comments or questions?
And the motion is for the two-year.
The motion is for the two-year agreement, 2% for the first year and then maxed out at 6% for the second year.
Okay, agreed.
My understanding? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. With that, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed would be no. Motion is carried. We have a two-year agreement. Item two is consider a resolution to approve a request for purchase in the amount of $11,312.28 to Weatherby Plumbing and Heating for replacement of two furnaces at City Hall and one roof air conditioning unit for the police department. All three units were budgeted in the fiscal year 2023 budget and came in under budget. Good news there.
Move to approve. Support.
Got motion support. Comments or questions? No?
No, it's just, it's nice to see something under budget, so.
I hear a couple of things. One, I didn't see a bid from Adams. Did they choose not to bid or did we not contact them? The local agency?
That was my question too.
There was a multiple, but I just missed, which is a big player in town.
Dave, our local Public Services Director, we reached out to, there should be three quotes. Weatherby's the lowest. We reached out to Adams several times. We get them to come look at it. They never came to look at them. And we didn't get a quote supplied. They're submitted, so that's the reason why you didn't see it.
Right. That was just my curiosity there. And if they could have made the work, too busy, good for them. I mean, that's a good thing.
How old are the units that are?
These are the oldest remaining in the city hall. We've had a plan to replace, there's six furnaces back there. These are the last two oldest ones. They are going on, last they do, 12 years. So that's the life expectancy on those.
We didn't do the air conditioner when we re-modulate the police department?
There, no, no. There's two separate units. We had one that we replaced, excuse me, I believe it was about a year ago. It failed, so maybe it's two years ago now. It's been, my ears are blurry. That one failed. We would have replaced that one. And this is the last remaining one. That's our oldest ones.
Okay.
Just trying to separate them so we don't replace them all at once. Trying to systematically redo those.
Okay. I guess my last question would be, these are energy efficient or as much as you possibly can, this is the word, thinking long-term?
Uh huh.
Great, yes. Anybody else? I believe we have a motion on the table, so all those in favor, yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. You can go ahead and buy your equipment. We need to ask for recommendations on bids. We consider a resolution to receive bids for downtown parking lot improvements, award the contract and approve the corresponding request for purchase, and along with authorizing the necessary signatures to execute the agreement. The following bids were received. We have looks like four bids ranging from $786,736.40 all the way up to $948,589.28. And the low bidder is the recommended bidder, McGurk, Seating and Gravel in Hop Pleasant, $787,736.40. Your pleasure.
Move to approve.
A little bit.
Support. Okay. Comments or questions? Any vague comments or comments from staff?
Yes. The reason why we've been kind of whole mouth bringing this to everyone. Um, we are, we're good with the, the bid that's been provided, but we wanted to make sure for some underground things that need to be done. So we did some televisation of water, sorry, storm water and sanitary. And we'll be coming back, like the subject note says here, we will be following up with a change order because there is a substantial sewer line that needs to be replaced on the east-west alley between Woodworth Avenue and Grashit Avenue. And then there's some small pieces of storm in the alley where we're going to put the park, park that needs to be replaced. And then there's another sanitary piece that needs to be replaced in lot three in the alley there. There's a piece that needs to be replaced in that. So we figured that's going to be another probably $150,000 right there. But as we discussed, we were going to be using our ARPA monies from here locally and from the county to pay for this project. And that should, like, you know, everything being equal, that should come in within what we have available for those funds, so. And we're looking forward to getting the contract signed and.
Have they given any recommendations or maybe opinions on potential change orders? I know they typically have a history of, of quick change orders.
Uh, we've reached out to them on our, that probably took some time with the, the original bid there. That's just for basic parking lots and above surface stuff. And then we wanted to make sure we went in there and got really good data on the sewer lines themselves, both sanitary and storm, and got this linear footage that we, actually, that actually needs to be replaced. So we have a pretty good feeling for that now. I know we've had conversations, Dave, about them in particular, not to knock them, but I know they do have a tendency of very quickly changing their numbers.
Um, one of the concerns that Eric mentioned, he'll bring up that. The storm sewer, it has a negotiated amount that's already part of the bid package. The sanitary does not have a dead portion of that. The reason for that is the televising companies were far behind from this one out for bid. So we went ahead, went out for bid, televised it after the bids were done, but we already had storm sewer amounts. Sanitary will have to be negotiated after this contract, so there'll be a change order. That's what Eric talked about. There also may be another change order on this project to look at resolving the storm sewer issue that's behind. All I know is Carolyn's cakes. Eric, you, I can't.
That's city moves now.
City moves. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um, doing some secondary storm sewer work there with the commission, so applying to do that, we can look at doing that later. That could potentially be a change order coming up. But this one, we have everything we need other than the sanitary amounts that are underground. And I would anticipate those numbers should look closer to their numbers that they did on the street project previously. So, but that'll be a part of that change order coming up.
Is there, is there merit to, to allowing all four of these companies to rebid that with that change order in mind? Because different companies are going to value different portions of the work at different rates. A, a company that does maybe more storm sewers, they may price that at a lower value than someone that may not. And I don't know what McGurk's, um, history is with, with the storm sewer, but their, their, their rates may be slightly.
They're capable of doing all of the work. That's not, so they're all, all four of those companies.
Correct. But it's more about how they value the work and where, you know, some companies are going to skim 15, 20% on this area of the work where some will value, they're just better at this portion so they can actually make more money on that side.
Anytime you do, anytime you rebid this, the prices in a normal economy would go up 25% if you rebid it because they're going to put in, they're going to put in a paying fee for every bid. Number two is everybody sees where their profits were previously. Some of them probably won't even bid on it because then it opens up the numbers. And I would not recommend rebidding it based on just that missing piece of information.
Is there, is there going to be at least a set kind of expectation for what McGurk? Because now that they basically have a bid, we're kind of, our feeder kind of helps the fire on that, that side of it.
Correct. That'd be something we'd have to negotiate going forward. But yes, that is a concern. But I would anticipate, based on the numbers we got from them on street projects, it should be close to that. But that's my assumption I had going into it.
So with that line of thought, Danny, I appreciate that. Um, you, you really are at the mercy of that, which is a downside to doing things this way. There's any penalty in the contract? I mean, if you bid that out, ask them for a price on that, now that we know the scope of the work, can we cap for a whole contract or?
Or can we bid that out separately? Maybe we.
Well, you probably can't. Once you got them in there digging there, to get two companies in the same job, it's probably going to be.
If it came to, you could look at that option. But based on what I have right now, what I understand through this contract, you can't, I, that's what one of my recommendations was to negotiate that number before we came forward with a contract. From what I've been advised of, we can't. This, I don't, I don't know why, but that's what I've been advised to ask. So what we would do is ask for a change order. Going into it doesn't make me most comfortable, if you're honest, if I'm being honest. But like I said, based on what, it should be relevant. We have eight-inch sanitary sewer. We have eight-inch sanitary sewer on a, excuse me, 12-inch sanitary sewer on the street project that was bid on. I would anticipate those numbers should be close to that. We already have an excavation number for the storm. We're already underground. If we were looking at just a parking lot with no underground, there might be a substantial change order on it. But because we're already underground and we are going to have the equipment there to do underground work, it should be a reasonable price increase to do the sanitary work, is what I would anticipate.
So if we tabled this for two weeks, would we have the change order amount?
Can't table it for any more period of time because of the way this contract is. The date is up pretty early to the next city commission meeting, so it would expire before the bid numbers were.
Can we, can we accept a contingent upon approval of a secondary bid of that change order work? So we would actually, so we're saying yes, we would approve this number of 786 if we like your second number. So that would at least hold their feet to the fire in terms of they, they just not, are just going to throw a number and we have to say yes. If we don't like their number, then we can come back to our second bid and say, hey, you are now the high bidder, bid out the secondary portion of the work. I refer that to the city attorney.
Yes, thank you, Dave. Um, so it would depend upon the specific language of the, of the request for proposals that went out. Having said that, I think we could, because by, by providing that condition, we're still providing the bidder the opportunity to reject it, right? They could, they could essentially decline the work and just say, no, we're, we're not interested in accepting that, the work with that condition. So I, I guess that's the risk that we would run with doing it that way. Is that we, we accept the bid conditioned upon a satisfactory negotiation for that second bid. And McGurk might just say, well, we're not going to do it that way. We're out. And then we're at Crawford, which is higher than the, than the low bid. So again, I think we could with, as long as we're recognizing the risk that they might decline and then the low bid goes away and then the next, the next low bid is Crawford at, at 841.
I guess I, you know, it's not the ideal situation, but do we have a history? I mean, apparently Danny has knowledge of change orders being problematic in the past. Is that our history?
Depends on the contractor, depends on the time of year.
With this particular contractor, we feel like we've been treated unfairly in the past. I mean, they've done multiple projects for us over the years. And we keep going, we do keep going back to them for bids. My assumption is that we don't feel that they have treated us unfairly.
We're on a contract with them right now for our street two.
From my experience, I feel like we have, we, they have been the low bid on a few, and there has been change orders. Now those change orders typically will still make them the low bid. So it's not like they're, they're, but from the conversations we've had, they, they have, the change orders typically, that, that number that we're seeing of about, you know, 50,000, 60,000 gap is, is really probably realistically half that based on their history. So if you look at the numbers in terms of seeing that gap, it, it shrinks very quickly.
Yeah, and it's, and I guess, you know, I've done a number of projects on a handshake and basically, I think most firms treat you fairly. If they don't, you know, they're going to lose all opportunities for future work, which I think would, should far outweigh in their minds the opportunity to gain a few bucks on us in the short term. And as far as I know, these are all very reputable companies. They're very longstanding companies. I, and I think we'd be in the same boat no matter who we go with.
And this is from Hop Pleasant, right?
Yeah, this is a little bit.
So it'd be stupid to a neighbor and, and word gets out that they.
What I would consider with this one is move forward with it if, if the prices come in extreme. We can bring that up for discussion. We have this contract before we inform the sanitary portion of it. If this seems unreasonable, bring it to this board. And that might be something to consider for future projects, is all I can recommend. But that's where I would, because if we reach out to any of the contracts, they'll be increased just because it's extra work. But, but if it comes back. it's extra work, but, um, but if it comes back in out of line, that's what I would bring up to this board, and that'd be consideration moving forward for future work. Based on what I have with the street project, I would believe we're at a reasonable, I would assume we're at a reasonable.
I would, I would assume so too, because my understanding is from the contractors I've talked to around the area, around the state even, this type of work has become extremely profitable in the last few years with all the government contracting going on. So there's lots of margin in there for these people already, so I don't think anybody's cutting real tight.
My, my gut would be to obviously, I think, approve this, this low bid, but make them aware that the secondary portion is still, is still very much in consideration. I think we need, you know, they need to be pretty transparent with, transparent with that portion.
No, I expect that. That'll be something we'll mention going forward when we talk about when we negotiate that number. Thank you.
Yeah, I can't imagine I could be so.
I, I don't think they will either. I just, I just, it's just anytime you basically hand someone a blank check.
Yes.
You have to be ready, you have to be willing to accept the number they put on it, and if you, and if we've already said yes, then we're stuck. Not like being stuck.
Yeah, I would agree. Probably everybody here agrees with that, so. With that, I do believe we have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion or comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion's passed, so thank you to McGurk for bringing us the low bid. Moving on down, reports of officers, boards, and committees. Commissioners may receive following reports by one resolution, or any commissioner may remove any item within this section for individual discussion. Vote. We have three for us tonight, the third quarter finance report, the building permits report for March twenty-twenty-three, and the city manager's newsletter. Your pleasure.
Mr. Receive one and two.
Support. Motion support, comments, or questions? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is passed. Receive those. Anybody interested in receiving the city manager's newsletter?
Mr. Receive, city manager.
I have a motion support, comments, or questions? Nothing yet? Okay, Eric.
Yes, um, we've got a few things to actually go through in this, um, uh, the newsletter that requires some input from the commission. Uh, first off, obviously, we've talked the last couple meetings about utility rates, and, uh, the last meeting, we revised, um, some, two options based on what we did previous to that. And, uh, to be, get ready for our public hearing, um, which will, um, according to the actual budget itself and for the proposed rates, um, we kind of need to know if everyone's more in favor of going with our option one, which more of those are ready-to-serv fees in the first year, or, um, the option two, which kind of, it basically breaks it almost half, um, over the first two years of those ready-to-served increases. And then this, these, both these options, um, over a five-year plan, um, for all our utilities, not just the ready-to-serve for water sewer, but the usage rates for water sewer, um, the, um, yard waste, and for the trash contracts. So, um, and also I just, uh, just put in, um, into the newsletter as, as a reminder is why we're doing, um, those ready-to-serve fees of, um, needing to be increased as much as they are, um, is all those capital projects, um, that we listed there between the water and sewer, um, that's, uh, are required over the next five years. Those rates that we propose over the next five years, um, will help us, will allow us to cover those projects, you know, as we discuss those, as long as we receive our USDA and/or, um, the state revolving fund funding, so. And, uh, we're in process of doing that. So I guess, uh, just wanted to see where everyone kind of stood tonight so we can plug that in and have it ready for, for the board on May night.
Well, it looked to me like all things, there weren't any negatives, or we weren't going to lose anything by splitting it equally between the first and second year, so I would prefer not just a all in one first year. I liked the second one better where you're splitting it between the first and second year, because it didn't look like there were any negative effects of doing it that way. So that's my opinion.
I, I certainly agree. I'd much prefer to split it between the first, between the two years. That jump, um, by doing it all in that first year would be, I think, a lot, for a lot of families.
Is there a way we could do it where they know the next year that this is what we're doing, that we're splitting it out? Should I be angry at the first one, then come back the next year angry?
This, 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 yeah, that's it. No, and that's, that's correct, because that's one of the discussions we had, is like, you do it all at once because you're in, you're going to take, um, you know, the, the comments from the public, one year or do it over two years, but at least if, if I'm reading what Roxanne and Andrew were saying, at least you'd be able to tell them, listen, we did our best to try to spread this out for you and still pay for your capital. Um, we're trying, we tried our best to do that, plus folks will know, because this is a five-year plan. So for us, this commission and for our citizens, they'll know exactly where the five years, kind of where they'll, all their utility will be, not just the water and sewer, but for yard waste and, and for trash removal, so.
I agree also. I mean, fiscally, it makes more sense to do it all at once because then we have the money upfront. But I think we have to weigh saving that money with the goodwill of the citizens, the city who are not going to be real happy with a thirty-four percent increase right off the bat. I think if we can save them some money by going over two-year period and not greatly affecting our ability to, um, do our capital improvement projects and stuff, I think that's the best way to go, like the two-year.
I think it just, I think it depends on personal preference, really, because it's, I personally would, would rather budget once and just figure it out for four years versus have to do a budget for a year, um, and then in a year have to redo that budget. Um, I think fiscally, it, personally, I typically would like to rip the Band-Aid off once and then learn to live through that four and a half, five years with, with that budget versus, and I think it does give us some benefits upfront. It, it does safeguard against us a change in maybe a commission that would want to do something different. So if there's a, if there's a gap there of two years and they come in and change it because of, of whatever reason it may be, then we lose the ability for, for Dave and the city to do some of that work. So that's the, I think that's some of the concerns that I have.
And I have, I, I believe Curtis, um, I go with Danny, like, it is a huge amount for our families, and it would be tight, but I, I go back to Curtis saying that we don't have the cushion that we need, so the numbers to me is upfront.
And I think, not to piggyback off, of each Curtis and, and David, if, I think, as I gathered their information, I think they both were leaning towards option one, and I, and quite frankly, Curtis has done a really good job in terms of balancing that portion of the city, and so I have a hard time disagreeing with him, given my concerns.
Like, I still feel the way, I, I mean, I didn't, I didn't hear that there was any huge negative, I mean, yeah, in an ideal world, if I had buckets of money to pay it all upfront, yeah, but as a single mom, um, with not a lot of cash, it's harder for me to come up with a huge amount, and it's easier for me to ease into it with a little. So that's my perspective.
I, you know, I totally get that, that concern. I, my wife and I own a hair salon. That's basically all we use is water, so trust me, it's not.
I mean, and we're still way lower than a lot of other places. I mean, we are never, there is no situation, I will tell you in my experience, that anybody is going to be happy about it, even though we are still painfully lower than where we should be. And so I just feel like we just have to, again, education, education, education. We can put it all out there, that doesn't mean people read it or retain it, but, um, we are working towards where we are going to have to continue increasing, but, I mean, I would respect the majority of the commission, but for me personally, I didn't see that there was, I thought that we still met whatever requirements we needed to meet in order to be eligible for grants or whatever else.
This would be, we wouldn't have provided that, that second option, if it couldn't make it. Um, one thing, and Dan's concern of, of commission changes and then, you know, saying, well, we were not going to make those increases that are here, um, just a reminder, we do need loans to do this, and once we get those loans, we're going to be locked in to repaying those, so.
So that we can't change.
So some of those things will, some of those where you just couldn't just willy-nilly just go, hey, we gotta.
Well, the board isn't scheduled to change for two years.
Yes.
We're, same people will be sitting here for, for those first two years at least, typically. Um, yeah, I mean, I can see both sides of the equation. It's better for a lot of people to ease into it. By the same token, you know, it's almost impossible to educate people that this is going to be a two-year process. They're not going to understand it the second year when they get hit twice. It's not going to be fun for them. There is no good answer. I just, I don't know. I'm personally unlike Danny, I'd rather rip the Band-Aid off once and get it done. The other thing that gives us, if you do it over one year rather than two, is inflation could be a nasty animal to us in this five-year plan, but you still fall far short of what, in fact, we know it's going to be far short of our real needs. This is only covering what we anticipate doing, not covering all of our needs and getting us back to a wonderful new shiny system. This is basically, you know, keeping the Band-Aids on and keeping, keeping the cart running down the track. It's not a panacea by any stretch of imagination.
But it's not going down lower on year three and four and five. I mean, we're increasing it year one, increasing it again in the two-year plan, and then it's staying that way. It's not like I'm paying it all the first year, I'm still going to be paying it all the second and third and fourth and the fifth. I mean, it's.
But the cost of our, of some of these projects.
Correct. No, I understand, I'm just clarifying, but it's not like we're only paying an increase for two years. I just want to specify that. It's not an increase for two, one or two years. They're permanent, and they will probably need to go up again, but we're.
And, and we're doing our best to.
Do you give the version you wanted, or do you want?
Well, I guess I'd like, at least, at least I'd like to have a straw poll of kind of where everyone, each one is at, that way.
Okay, so I guess, do we just kind of go around?
Yeah, we wouldn't need a motion, it's just a preference. I would be option one.
Roxanne, would you start your two, do you want to tally for us, please? So we have an official record keeper. Okay, so Roxanne is a two, Danny your one.
One, yeah.
Roger.
Two.
I would probably feature two, just for no reason.
And one.
There are one.
And one.
So I didn't count who.
I've got four twos and three ones.
Four twos and three ones, okay.
Okay, well, present the budget, and, and, you know, there, but that, that does get us there, and like I said, it, it's going to be, it's going to be rough anyway. Try to explain these to folks, especially, um, when the bills first go out of these new increases, you know, front desk is going to be, there's going to be a lot of phone calls asking.
If we put messages on the bills, can we?
Oh, yeah.
So can we start warning people that they're looking at substantial rate increases due to anticipated construction? I don't know how you word that exactly, but.
We also put a caveat in there that we're also way considerably below our locals, so that way it's like, hey, we're basically bringing it up to where it shouldn't have been a lot.
Well, it's not. I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's still not.
True, and I, but I think that, that piece of information with the flyer that Greg's talking about, as like a, hey, a click note at the bottom, I think that'll help smooth things over, you know?
And so there, there won't be nothing that smoothes anything, but it's a good idea to be putting it out there.
And the Herald did a decent article about it, uh, here this week, so just that, so it's starting, that we're starting to put it out there, and it's not just our community, it's, it's every community in the state of Michigan. Okay, great. Well, thank you, I really much, very much appreciate it. Marijuana licenses. Staff, um, provided the applications to the commission, and then as we were looking through, as the commission was looking through them, um, the comments and information I got back from the commission was, hey, um, we really believe that, uh, there's a lot here and that there's merit for each one of these licenses. So, um, taking that into account and, um, looking at, um, keeping projects moving, doing these things moving forward, um, to the attorney, and as staff, here's what we're looking to recommend. Uh, we would recommend that, so we look at increasing our, our adult-use marijuana recreational licenses from the three to four. Um, that can be done at, with a simple amendment to the ordinance, uh, eight thirty-four. This, uh, the attorney could draft up the amendment to change the licensing from three to four, and this board would vote out that, that evening. Uh, fifteen days later, that, uh, becomes, uh, the new, uh, the new ordinance. From there, uh, some of the other comments that, you know, we, through discussion is, uh, obviously when we went through the medical side of things, that, uh, we had, um, one, um, one medical, um, entity that actually made it all the way through, got open and has been open for business. Uh, all the other ones, uh, one didn't, uh, make it at all. Uh, one is we have, um, issues that we're going to have to take it down. Um, we have, you know, steel in the air, that nothing got finished, and then we had one that, that moved, and then, uh, this commission, the planning commission, had to work quite hard to get that house back into productive use, as a single-family home, so they got that done. Um, it's keeping that all in mind, um, and then keeping, um, our, our citizens' concerns and our concerns here, because when those things don't get done or finished, uh, we're the ones that are up here taking the comments from folks, saying, what are you going to do about this now? Um, and this is just a recommendation. One of the things that, um, we would like to recommend is, um, those that still need construction, that we, when we offer the license, as part of the condition of that license, that we, um, include a, um, financial construction, basically a financial bond in the city's favor for the estimated cost of the construction, to ensure the construction's completed. So if it's not completed, that we have funding to either, if the building's close to being finished, we finish it out, and we have a actually complete building in community, or we, it's, at some certain point, we have it taken down, we have the money to take it down.
Can I ask a question about that? Our, in view of being as equal as possible to all, are we going to be doing that for any new building that people, I mean, a car wash or a hospital building or something? I mean, are we going to be asking that, because we have, had issues in the past?
Oh, I, I get what you're saying.
No, I know, but that's what I'm asking. Are we, in, in the line of being equitable and fair, for lack of a better word, are we going to be types of constraints or carrots for everyone? I mean, I, I just have some concerns. I'm just curious.
Well, I, I think it's, I think it's a, a great concern, but I think that there's one slight difference in terms of there's an approval of an, an extensive license on top of this versus a car wash, you wouldn't necessarily.
I just.
Yeah, I'm, well, whether it's a restaurant or, or anything like that.
Because quite honestly, the packets of information we got, we're not comparing apples to apples at all. I, it was not clear, and it was, Andrew, to his accolades, put in a lot of time, and I, quite frankly, was not interested in doing that. I, I mean, I feel like there, it should have been clearer. I thought we had a, other places had, we thought we had vetted that other, um, communities had done this, and I take this very seriously and watch businesses in Alma, but it was extremely difficult to compare things that were not, from my vantage point, comparable. I mean, they, it was a more completely different, whatever, completely different sets of information, and I did not have time to do a doctoral thesis of investigation like Andrew did, but, um, so that was my other concern about this. I mean, I have no problem with the, making the adjustment from three to four. I did have my concerns about the adding that additional, was whether we were making that a policy of whether we were going to do that, um, going forward for all things, because we do have issues with other places.
No, I guarantee, and that's why I, I, I thought about this in the discussion from the commissions, you know, that I spoke to about it, and as big an attorney, is it's something that we could look at doing, because the last thing I need now is, like I said, we're still going to have to deal with the one that's behind the big B.
Sure.
I still got to deal with that medical clinic that's on Morburg Drive.
Correct.
So this is not just one, one thing, but just looking at what happened to us during medical, and I'm really, I'm very concerned when I read articles of where the marijuana industry is at, and.
Sure.
Are we going to have the ability of, can someone finish it out whenever they get halfway through and, and they call it quits on us, and then I'm, then I'm stuck. So I'm throwing it out there, it doesn't have to be done, um, but from the comments, you know, from the, the size of the applications and the likelihood.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, that moving it to four, you know, takes care of that, because everybody got equal opportunities, the ones that submitted it in the, the application window, they can get their application and, and move forward. Um, but like I said, you know, it's, it's concerning because of what's being out there from a sustainability standpoint and the, you know, of. standpoint and the, you know, of what the market can bear.
I think it's something that we ought to look at. We don't have to do that right now, but we should look at, anytime somebody wants to put something that looks like it could be risky in our, in the city. I want to put a restaurant down this vacant piece of property, and it's going to cost $3 million for me to put up this restaurant. What is to ensure the city that I'm going to be able to finish that? Or are you going to get stuck with half of my restaurant?
Well, I also don't want to get into the business of determining the risk, because I, you know, there's no, I'm not a risky person that would start a business of any sort, so I'm not one that you want trying to determine if people are willing to take a chance. And I don't want to discourage people from coming down.
And that's, and that's the other side of the conversation, is that getting discouraged.
But I just, I'm just thinking of, I mean, I always go back to the, what I thought personally was a policy of, we're redoing a street, we're putting a sidewalk, you know? So I'm just questioning, putting it out there for all of us to mull over whether this is an unofficial policy that we're heading for everyone to be equal in all matters, to save empty buildings down there. This is a different, I mean, because I do think that perhaps people were getting the medicinal licenses just as a placeholder to then hopefully move into the adult use. But again, it's just a thought that I...
And I, I agree, Roxanne, a hundred percent. I think, you know, personally, I'd be against the bonding issue. I mean, quite frankly, I think that's an impediment to anybody, the private investor that might consider investing in our community. I just, I don't like that when you, and then you start singling out end industries, and quite frankly, Roger, you mentioned restaurants. There are many businesses that are more risky and more apt to fail than opening a restaurant. And they're also, a restaurant is probably something that, if you talk to our citizens, that would be, a new restaurant would be their number one wish for something you will open in town, is another restaurant. We always want more restaurants. We all love to eat, we always want a new place to truck. I'd be very hesitant to try and implement, you know, like you said, you've got the medical marijuana building half-built, we've got a doctor's office half-built. I don't think we're going to do this to doctors. I can't imagine the hospital would be very happy with us, and our medical community and our citizens would be very happy if we're discouraging doctors coming to town, so I'd be very much against that. I have no problem going to four units. Quite honestly, I think there's a phrase used in the past, irrational exuberance, which I think applied to the economy as a whole a while back, and I think that applied probably to the marijuana industry back in the days when that one building that never got completed was going on, and some other things were happening. I think there was a lot of money being thrown at that industry. I think people have wised up now, and the serious money is remaining, the speculative money is probably largely gone from that industry. My own analysis of this, of how things are running, along with some information provided by our one operator, that, you know, the change in that industry, you know, moving away from medical towards recreational, I don't think very many people saw that coming. So I think the industry has changed, and if they're not really committed and don't have the full funding to finish a building, I don't think they're probably going to break ground. Would be my own estimation at this point. So anymore, at least not any more risky than any other business that's going into a new operation. So that's my two cents worth on that particular subject. Anybody else?
I think this may be a bit more risky than a restaurant, just because there's four of them kind of taken off from the start line, trying to get this done, trying to beat the others to it. It just seems like a different scenario if you're kind of monitoring the risk for restaurants and looking at that, assessing that, and moving forward with an individual restaurant, that this is, feels a little bit more like a race to where, yeah, I'm, I'm concerned if we don't have that bond there, that we may end up with a few people getting partway through it and deciding not to finish in a way that may not happen with other industries, but I don't know if that's a fair assessment or not, but that's, that's my concern.
Adam, what's your, what's your experience in this, and is it like that in other communities where they have bonds?
Thank you. So as to the bonding issue, I, I think there are some, some non-legal concerns, and those would be some, some of the mayor spoke to, which is just kind of providing an impediment to investment, and obviously that's, that's relevant consideration. I have worked with other communities who have done bonds. Not all communities do those, but it is, it is an acceptable practice for the reasons that we've discussed. I will say that I think the marijuana industry is sort of notorious for obtaining, obtaining a license and kind of getting partway through and then not finishing, and maybe that's just because my experience is, is so much more vast in that area than it is working with other types of commercial businesses, but I, I've seen it happen, and then, and many times, and again, it's, it's the reason for the bond. The other thing I guess I would know is that, but I, I've, I've heard the discussion, aspects of the discussion that we've had here tonight previously, where folks, for example, I've heard in other communities, like a township board member say, well, how can we, why, we shouldn't put any restrictions or any conditions on licenses? That's just not fair. We don't do it to any other business, so why are we doing it to these businesses? And the answer to that simply is because we are permitted to do so by statute, and you don't need a special operator's license to operate a car wash or a restaurant, other than just a business license or something in general, but you do need a particular license to operate a marijuana establishment. And our state legislature has sought that to enact that, and we've enacted our ordinance, so that's what gives us the authority to do so, for, for better or worse. You know, we can disagree with the wisdom of that, but that, that is the difference, is that we, there are very few businesses where you have to obtain this additional license to even engage in the business, and this is the exception. And so, again, for better or worse, with wisdom or lack thereof, that's how it's been established in this state, and so that's the justification, and that's how we are allowed to put additional conditions on a marijuana business that we would not put on a restaurant or a car wash or a whatever. And that's just the, that's just the state of, of things on the ground, so to speak. So it is a permissible condition. I think there are potential negative side effects, like the mayor spoke to, so it's, I don't, I think you could have a rational perspective on either side of it. But again, I, from my perspective, the differences between this industry and others is the fact that that additional license is needed, and that's, that's what's established by our state legislature and our ordinance, and also the fact that, again, in my experience, the marijuana industry is a little more notorious than other industries in terms of just obtaining a license and doing nothing, and just holding the license perpetually, or in terms of beginning a project and not finishing it. And I, I think we've seen a lot of that since the, the industry has sort of cooled down. And so, again, I, I could see arguments on either side, but it is perfectly acceptable legally to, to do what's called a financial security agreement, and essentially how that would work if the commission had interest, is that a bond would be obtained for approximately 110% of the total estimated cost. The township, or the city, excuse me, would be a beneficiary of the bond, to the point where if the entity walked away, if the developer walked away and didn't finish it, then the bond would be there to try to finish the project. And so, again, I've worked with communities who've done it, and then I've worked with communities who haven't. I would say most do not have a bond requirement, but it's not like especially rare, probably 25% do. So, but, so again, it's, it's a minority, but it's not a small minority, so it's, it's pretty common. My other, I guess, comments would be, there is some wisdom to increasing the number of licenses from three to four, from a legal perspective, most chiefly, it protects us from litigation. What's extremely ubiquitous in this industry is that whomever gets a license is going to say, you did a great job, and your criteria is perfect, and you did excellent scoring, and then whomever does not get a license either says you mis-scored, or your criteria didn't check out the right things, and it just happens every single time. And so, basically, the qualifications for a marijuana lawsuit in the state of Michigan largely are you're an unsuccessful applicant, and there's, there's, a lot of times, there's not much more to it. So my point in saying that is that it's not rare at all for a municipality to be sued by an unsuccessful applicant, and there's just, there is or at least was enough money in the industry where I think it's worth it to those developers to throw money at a lawsuit, if they win, they get a license, and it's all worth it. So my point is by adding a fourth license and essentially giving all the applicants a license, obviously that drastically reduces the chances of being sued, and functionally probably to zero. So, or as close to zero as you could be, nothing's ever zero. But with three, when we're, if we're going to have one unsuccessful applicant, there's always a chance that unsuccessful applicant would want to explore a lawsuit. So, so it's beneficial from that perspective. I guess the other thing I would know, and kind of apropos of my discussion a few moments ago, there's a decent chance that all four will not open. I mean, there's just, there just is. So if we give four licenses, that's not a guarantee that four marijuana retailers will open. There's a decent chance that one of these developers will obtain a license, and for whatever reason, it just won't, it won't be further pursued. So it does, it's not a guarantee that we'll have four shops in town. And so with that, and again, with, with the increasing of licenses, there are some non-legal concerns. For example, you might, for whatever reason, just say, as a matter of policy, I don't want four, it's too many. Personally, I don't really think there's going to be a meaningful difference between three and four, and from a legal perspective, to reduce our chances of being involved in litigation, I like it. I think it's a really clean way to resolve this and, and kind of keep everyone reasonably satisfied. So I think that's a reasonable consideration, and then as Eric noted, in order to do that, we simply need to amend our, what I call the police power ordinance, and a police power ordinance is just a non-zoning ordinance. So our ordinance that establishes the regulations, we amend that, can be done at one meeting, we increase the number of licenses from three to four, and once that's published and effective, we're good to go. And that, again, can just be done at one meeting. So I think there's a lot of value and sense to go that route. And then in regard to the financial security agreement, as I said, I think there's meritorious arguments on either side, and I think we've, we're all, we're all hitting on the right points of why we would do it or not. I guess it's just a matter of preference at the end of the day for the commission.
Adam, I have two questions really for you off of that. I think one of my biggest concerns along this whole process has been the finishing structures. So two, two kind of questions that, is it standard to have 110%, or is, or is there a way, or is it even common practice to maybe pro-rate based on the, the viability of the current building? So for example, you take a company that's open, they have a storefront, their business, maybe their bond rate or percentage is different than one that is maybe starting from the ground, ground zero? Is there issues in that? And then the other side of that is, what does it take to actually to get a bond? Is it, is that a process?
My assumption is it's a performance bond, so there wouldn't be like, the one that's operating wouldn't need one. They're not putting up a structure.
And that's, that was my question.
So if you've got an existing structure, there is no need for a bond, be my understanding of it, if that's...
Yeah, I, I would agree with the mayor on that, and I, I think, I think that's right, and we could definitely, based on sort of, on those comments, we do sort of take into account of the, the developers operating. So they likely will not need a bond because they've, they're already operating and the structure's already complete. And so this would just be for folks who are erecting a new structure to ensure that it's completed. And so 110% is, is standard from the agreements that I've worked on, and it's very common to do, to require that amount in other agreements, and we've required this in other contexts, like solar energy, wind energy, things like that. And so that is, that is pretty standard. It's, it's not written in stone, though. The commission had another number it wanted to consider, that's acceptable, that'd be perfectly fine. As to the second question, bonds are, are relatively straightforward to obtain. You just go to kind of, any insurance agent can get you a bond. I've obtained several bonds in my career for probate matters, where if, if someone becomes the conservator of a, of a person, and they're going to be managing $200,000 in assets, the judge makes them go get a bond for worth $200,000. And so they're, they're generally inexpensive, and so it's, it's, it's a relatively straightforward and simple process to obtain a bond.
And then, I know, obviously, it's probably based on the scope of the project, is there, without being an insurance, associated costs with that? Do you have an estimate of what? I'm just trying to get a grasp of if...
The cost of the bond?
Yeah, cost of bonds, or what?
So I, this is, please don't hold me to this, because I'm, I'm trying to remember, it's been probably six months since I've had to obtain one. I, I think the last bond I obtained was for, let's say, $250,000, and I think it was in the $500 or $600 range was, was the cost. Now, having said that, insurance companies, we talked earlier, are always measuring things on risk.
Risk-based, yeah.
And so, and so the chance, they're going to look at every situation in its individual context. So in my context, it was looking at, is this person going to run away with the individual's money, whom they're now managing? In this context, they're, they might determine that these, that these are riskier propositions, and so they might charge more. But that, that's how much it was in my case. But again, I've not been personally involved in obtaining a bond for a marijuana developer, so it's basically about how risky the, the insurance company feels the prospect is. I mean, there's, the other thing is, I mean, if, we always can amend, right? And so if, again, I'm not recommending, necessarily recommending one action over the other, but if it turns out that the developers come back and they can start and say, listen, this is too burdensome, we can't afford this amount, we always could go back and amend, that's always an option as well. It's not ideal, it'd be better to stick with what we have, but, but it's, there's, there's always ways to, to go back and try to fix it if we, if we need to.
And if I, if I may, there are a couple of points come to mind, as you talked about the state and the mess they've actually put us in because of the way that this was handled at the state level, and I just, you know, if anybody watches public television, it's interesting. On a program last weekend, there was a show, and we found out, and it's widely known now, it's in the news, that the person that Governor Slater had appointed to kind of put this process together, the whole marijuana mess, is apparently now going to jail because he was taking bribes. This has been a mess from day one for us, and probably for most communities across the state, because it was so maligned. I kind of had the impression from the get-go that it was designed to be a mess, and I think what was transpiring at that level was, kind of demonstrates that that's probably true.
I bet.
The process is not good. Now we're looking, you talk about a bond, and so we've talked about this performance bond, and litigation, potentially, you know, you're talking about three people that are talking about existing buildings, one is talking about a new building, are you not open to litigation that's to maybe singling out this one person that's going to need to get a bond when the other three potentially do not because they're talking about existing buildings? I don't know if it's...
And that's great.
Who knows?
You would, you have to abstain from that one. That's, that is on that.
I'm, my plan is to abstain while voting, but I want the conversation...
No, I'm saying that's what you're speaking of, is that one.
Well, the reason that, the really reason I brought that up, you know, this whole thing up is because we got all those comments, I actually looked at those comments, it's like, wait a minute, you're, we're going to go out and provide basically three new people licenses when two, the three that you provided before didn't get it done, and you still had, or you got that to deal with behind big B.
Is there, is there a way to read that?
That's why, and I, I'm sorry, but I, the reason I brought this to you is to be so that conversation happens, so the public knows that we've had this conversation, that we're not just blindly saying, yeah, we're going, this is, you know, they're going to get it done because we, we, our track record isn't so great. So that's why I brought this before you to discuss, and we don't have to do it this way. I do agree, you know, we can move forward, we get the four licenses raised, and I think that's the right thing to do, and however the board wants to move forward with, you know, either providing a bond or not a bond, I would hope that these entities would do pencil the paper and say, this is going to work, or it's not going to work, and they make a bit, a proper business decision of moving forward, but like I said, just the articles I've been reading lately, and it's, it's, it's not growing, it's, it's contracting, is what I've been reading, so.
The industry. The answer what Michelle, Roxanne was asking about setting a precedent, I think the attorney has provided us with an excuse on that, is that we would not have to set a precedent because this is a separate kind of an operation, and because of the way it was set up by the government requiring a license, realizing that it is a risky business, that would certainly be okay to want to do a bond on these kind of businesses and then not have to put a bond on my restaurant or, or, you know, whatever, because this is a different, I'm not playing on opening a restaurant. This is, you know, completely different kind of a business here for this. I think we could do that. I'm still kind of tossed as to whether I want to put that to burden on, on the other entities that still need to build. I, I think going from four to three, I think is, or three to four, I'm sorry, is, is simply something that we should do, and if we could do that tonight, I think that would move the process, the whole process up by two weeks if we could, if we could amend that ordinance tonight and go from there. up by two weeks if we could amend that ordinance tonight and go from there. But I don't know, I'm not sure where I stand on the bond.
Is there a way to reach out to these individuals so they may reach out to an insurance company so we may see what roughly those bond issues may be? If it's something in the neighborhood of five, six, seven, even $3,000, in the grand scheme of things, an investment that large, I'm sure CONSUME can speak to the amount of money they've put into that business. I, you know, a thousand dollars is a thousand dollars, but when you're looking at that scale, it's a half of a tenth of a percent of what you're putting into the business. And to Greg's comment of the volatility in the environment, that protects us as a city. My job to sit in the seat is to protect the best interests of the city in that regard. Now, in other facets, I don't have the ability to do that. I don't have the ability to put those safeguards in. But given the opportunity to do that by the state and by the issues that, again, I think it's in our best interest, assuming the costs aren't extreme, to at least look into those and maybe pursue what those actually would be for individual entities that are...
So who decides and enforces if they default? I mean, who, do we have to go to court with them, or the bond?
There'd be terms in the bond, or in the requirement for the bond. What is the performance? We have to have a completed occupancy granted, ready to operate this building by such and such a date.
So whoever issues the bond makes those determinations?
No, we issue the terms, and then they get a bond, they're going to perform, they will have a building built and occupancy granted to them by such and such a date, would be an example for, could be whatever you want, but that would be...
My goal would be, as long as there's a good faith effort and they're moving forward in the process, we would continue, maybe with a hard deadline, but you would continue to grant extensions as long as they're attempting to make that happen. I think, again, my big concern was, there wasn't an attempt on multiple fronts, and you saw them fall flat on their face in terms of how those go.
If I may...
Well, there actually was, I believe, the entity that did not finish their building actually came to us at one point and offered us a bond if we would give them an extension, but in the way the rules were regulated by the state, we felt that we were going to open ourselves up to litigation if we granted them a special exemption that we would give it to everyone. So we actually turned down a bond in the past from that particular entity that we're now saddled with, they're steel in the air, as Eric said.
At least moving forward with this, the bond would be available to all participants, it would be even playing field.
Well, actually, and I guess depending on how you want to rate the requirements, my understanding is that three of the four entities are talking about existing buildings. I don't believe we're talking about a bond for a remodel project, are we? My understanding is this is a bond for new construction, which would be one of the four. So you're now singling out one of the four.
My vote would not be to single out one, it would be to put maybe a return to current state, or whatever the language needs to be in the bond to get it back to where it's either viable for the city to resell, it's something that you can return to the state in which they started, or whatever the language that I think we would have to put in in order to get it to that point. I'm not saying that we single out one at all. I think if anything, you, I mean, it just, again, with the volatility of this kind of industry, it's in the city's best interest to protect itself.
Well, the other two, you know, the one structures that they're looking to rehab, they're both in really bad shape. They need a lot of work.
So we could require of ones going into existing buildings, so all have to get a bond? And obviously, with existing buildings, it's just written differently than what the bond would be for somebody building new, right? So it would be even then, everybody has to get a bond, they're just different depending on what their circumstances, right?
I think that's basically correct. Everyone would be required to get a bond in order to ensure the project is finished and essentially that business opens. I know we have the one, but I don't think it's requiring any additional construction. And so I think they might be the one who wouldn't need to get a bond, but the other three, right, the other three would. And so just to address two issues that have arisen, Commissioner Allman had referenced the changing of the ordinance. We would not be able to do that tonight, unfortunately. In order to amend an ordinance, you have to do so by an ordinance, we can't just do that verbally. And so we would need to prepare the ordinance amendment, have that back for the commission. So we could have a special meeting prior to the next Tuesday, two weeks from now, or we could just do it at the next meeting. But that's, Eric and I can certainly work together and get that accomplished. As to the Commissioner Warnock's question regarding sort of doing some legwork in terms of these bond issues, if that's the commission's desire, we could do that. I think as the mayor referenced, we would sort of need to think about some terms and then say to the entities, we want you to look at this and come back to us, and our view of this is that it's feasible. If you're going to take the position that it's not feasible, come back to us with some examples of why it's not feasible, or some really burdensome quotes from insurance companies, your bonding agents.
Okay, so here's my, I'm just going to think, like, I'm not, I don't know the answer. We have one entity, CONSUME, that has been here for two years. They opened with medical, they've been a business, their business dropped as soon as recreational, you know, they came, and we keep pushing things off and off, you know, for them. So if we have a special meeting, like, before two weeks, would that allow them to get into recreational before that if we were still working on this bond issue? Because they've just been, you know, they're a business that are trying to stay afloat in Alma, and we just keep, you know?
Yeah.
I don't want to say, come back with this in two weeks, and then another two weeks we come back and change the ordinance, and then they have to wait 15 days, and it's like, they've already been waiting.
So I think the answer to the question is, I can prepare the ordinance event, you know, immediately, functionally. It takes 18 hours to have a special meeting. And so if we wanted to have a special meeting in the very near future, we could do that. I believe CONSUME is the entity that does not require any additional construction to their building, and that is the concern here. So again, they're the entity who would not be required to get a bond if we were to go the bonding route. And obviously, if we didn't go the bonding route, then no one's required. So I think, again, the answer to the question is, we could have a special meeting probably as soon as Thursday or Friday of this week if we wanted to. A word, CONSUME's license theoretically, and then we'd have to, the only other thing that would have to occur is that publication had to occur for the ordinance amendment. And so, but that relates to the increasing from three to four, so that doesn't necessarily relate to CONSUME's license. So because CONSUME is just one entity, again, they can be really awarded the license at any time. It's just, the risk would be that, we want to basically be sure on our path forward, because if we're awarding a number of licenses that is less than the total of applicants, that's where we need to determine how we're going to do that, right? I mean, we really have a bulletproof scoring method. But if we're going to award all four anyways, then it's less important because everyone's going to end up with a license, or at least the opportunity for a license. So did I, have I answered your question? So we could have a special meeting, and we could award CONSUME's license, is the answer.
I would, I mean, I don't think it's quite advantageous for us to push one to the forefront, even though they have been great. I think trying to keep everything on a level playing field, trying to keep all, honestly, I would lean towards that all four would have to be required to receive a bond. Obviously, CONSUME's, I don't want to speak to individuals, but they would probably satisfy that immediately. But in terms of going through the process, going to an insurance company, getting the bond, you want all four of these entities to be on the same playing field. Now, in that, and as a commissioner, I don't want to tailor the bonding wording to prioritize a company that has stepped forward. So I would recommend that all four would be required to do it. Now, theirs, in their circumstance, would be almost immediately met. So their risk and their rate would probably be lower, I would assume, but I don't want to, I still think that they should have to do it because the other three would have to do it.
Yeah, and so if we're going to, I think Commissioner Warnock's brought up a good point, and I guess this is the way I would phrase it, or I'd recommend, if we're going to do the bonding route, what we would say is, you need to have X completed by a given date or the bond, right? And so if, you need to have construction completed and occupancy ready by a given date, and if you can't have that, then we need the bond. And so, you know, that would prove, obviously, that CONSUME would be the only one probably who would satisfy that because they're the only ones who don't need any work on their building. And just to be clear, we're not doing this to favor CONSUME if we did this. It wouldn't be about that. It would be about, what is our ultimate goal as a city? Our ultimate goal is to have, for each structure, to have construction completed and for the retail shop to open, or at least have occupancy. And that's the equal standard for everyone. So that's obviously a very logical goal. No community wants half-built buildings. And so it's got nothing to do with the entity. It could be any of the four entities or any other entity that applies, it's got nothing to do with CONSUME or the entity. It would just be about essentially saying, this is the finish line, completed construction and occupancy, and if you can reach that finish line, you don't need a bond. If you do, then you need a bond. So that's a way we could phrase it. I mean, we could just, we could, again, we could just tailor our bonding language to whatever we want it to be, like I just said. I don't, I don't even know if a given marijuana company has already had everything completed and they're ready to go on day one, I don't even know that they'd need a bond, or that they could just come in and say, we've performed, or we've completed performance, so. But I agree with Commissioner Warnock that we should keep everything equal as possible, and certainly not single out, or bias, or favor, prejudice any company over another. So if I may, again, I think the consideration for the commission is, the first issue is the number of licenses, and that's the first issue that needs to be addressed. So we can't make that amendment tonight, but I think perhaps some direction from the commission on that issue would be appreciated. It's just from listening to the folks talking, it sounds like we're in relative agreement that four licenses would be the way to go. And so we could prepare that, and then have that ready for the next meeting, whether that's a special or the next regular meeting. And then the next determination would be the bonding issue. We could not require a bond, and that's perfectly fine, or we could require a bond based upon the terms, some of the terms that we've discussed.
I think a straw-type poll would be great, again, I think in terms of giving Eric some direction in terms of how to pursue.
Well, I think I do have the direction on the number of licenses. I agree, we have four of them. So I guess, just from the standpoint, do you feel a bond is necessary, is really the next question.
And if we want to do the same thing, straw poll? Roxanne, your feelings on that? You want us to come back to you?
Yes, please.
Danny?
Assuming the costs are minimal in retrospect to the overall overhead of the business, then I would be in favor of a bond to protect the city.
Conditionally.
Conditionally. So I mean, if we look at the rates and they're 30, 40, 50, $60,000, I have no idea what a bond costs. Then obviously, I don't, I think that's detrimental to the business, but if it's a fraction of a percent, I think it's in the city's best interest to pursue that.
There were times when performance bonds for risky stuff, when I was in the insurance business, were 10%. So a million-dollar building is $100,000, which is not in favor.
Right, but that's, I mean, that's where my concern is, we can't, it's just like trying to decide on a one-year, two-year for our, I mean, I think we're in some ways maybe going astray from what we can make a reasonable decision. I mean, it's not like, it's much like the applications where it was four lumps of, some that were clearer than others, and, you know, I don't know.
Well, Danny, to your point, Danny, you know, if an operator was deemed by an insurance company to be less favorable or a higher risk, their rate may be unreasonable in your analysis of 10%. You know, where you say 1% is fine, 10 is not. Then what do you do? It's 10% for one guy, it's 1% for the other. Granted, you may need it more for the guy that's 10%, right? You may want that even more. I don't know, does that matter when you say you've got a condition there?
I mean, if we just had to give it a yes or no, I would be in favor of having a commission.
I guess they would stay in favor.
Roger?
Yes.
Andrew?
I don't know. I haven't toured on that.
Let's see what else.
Yeah, sure, me.
Okay, so what is this, and I personally am against adding restrictions to investments, so that would be no.
Can we ask?
Unfortunately, it's not appropriate for the, you can speak at this point, you can talk at the end of the meeting when we have a public forum, but...
If our bonds could be less restrictive, like, you are, you show us within 60 days, 90 days, 180 days, where you are in the, you know, how are you progressing in these, in 180 days?
I think that's just going to open you up. I think what you want is, from a new occupancy permit within X number of days is what you want to look for. Progress along the way is going to be judgmental, and, you know, I say I'm 80%, you say I'm 50, and where am I at? And Tom, for days, you're going to give me, I just think that'd be more problematic than, that'd be my opinion on that, so.
And like I said, folks, it's strictly just where we've been, and then where, where everything is at. Because personally, if we gave out the licenses and no one says someone didn't do anything, that's fine, if they didn't do anything. The thing is, is you start putting things in, or tearing a house apart, and then leaving...
Or you put up a doctor's office and have a big hole in the sidewalk that sits there for four years, and nobody does a darn thing about it.
And that's where I'm trying to protect my...
It's a doctor's office, so they're okay with that. And that's where I have a problem with it.
No, I agree, I agree. I'm trying to, I'm trying to put some out there that...
Well, we're changing, we're going forward, we're changing what we have done in the past.
Well, I don't know that we are, in that, for everything.
I don't think that was any hesitation.
That was my original point, was saying that if we're going to, I mean, I recognize this...
I meant in this, in the licensing of the marijuana, is what I was talking about.
And like I said, from a stats point of view, like I said, bonding is just, because I know what's been, what we've been talking about, not just with marijuana, but other structures, and what our experience was. And this is an option, something I wanted to talk about and put that out for you folks, and something we don't want to do, that, like I said, if someone got their license and didn't do anything, that's hurt my feelings.
No, I understand the reasoning behind it. My concern is of putting things in general, or even a field, I mean, we don't know, I mean, the reason I brought it up, to discuss, and I wanted to hear everyone's opinion, but my concern is that, you know, and we can say that it's just for this situation because it's volatile, but the impression may be that business is looking to put some, a place somewhere. That was what I wanted to discuss, because it will have a negative connotation to it.
How many other business types now, you might not have any, are subject to an extra sort of license as marijuana would be? Do you know?
I believe here's, here's a lot, it's our...
Yep, that's a state, that's a state board, correct, in terms of a city, local...
We don't license businesses, I don't think.
Yeah, no, not...
To them, we're...
No, state, there's liquor.
Any restaurant with a health department.
There are different regulations for different industries, but the city itself doesn't issue business licenses.
Special land use permits are somewhat analogous in the sense that you can place conditions on them, but they're different in the sense that a special land use permit relates to the land, whereas this relates to the use, the actual activity.
It's longstanding, all comers are treated equally. We don't treat you differently if you're one business versus another type of business.
No, right, yep, exactly. It's, the difference is the location of the land and the proposed use, whatever that may be.
But the positive is, folks, we all agree on the fourth, so we're going to get that going and get that accomplished.
So do we want a special meeting?
From what I understand, it would be helpful for these guys who are against...
I would be in favor, just to move things as quickly as...
Because that may affect the other ones, too, because they're...
I think...
And we could quit talking about it, too.
Yeah, no, I, that's why I was...
There's great benefits of meeting.
I would love to be on this, get everyone underway, and that's it.
Yeah, because we definitely want more businesses.
If they were, like I said, though, I don't want to, I have enough issues that the mayor just brought up about the doctor's office, it's been nothing but, and it's, and I don't want any more, because I already have two, I had two issues with marijuana from the medical side of things that I've dealt with, so, or Eric, I still do it.
I...
Thursday night?
I think we have had enough time to maybe reach out and actually estimate in terms of what some...
I don't think we care what the cost...
We don't want to get into that, that's not, in my opinion.
I don't, yeah.
No, I'm just...
We either voted that we're going to do that, or we're not going to do it, it doesn't, because like Greg was saying, I mean, some, one person, your bond, Danny, might be way lower than my bond because you're less of a risk for me. So I just don't think we can, I am not in favor of getting into deciding what somebody's saying or not. So I, I just don't think we can, I, I am not in favor of getting into deciding what somebody's saying or not. We're either for doing this, or we're not for doing it, irregardless of what it's going to cost.
Well, the special meeting will simply be to change the number of liquor license, or of marijuana licenses, correct, at this point?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
That's all that will be on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, that was Thursday, April twenty-seventh, that you referenced.
That's what I'm looking at.
Any particular time?
I'm looking to the fellow commissioners to see their availability, actually.
I have to be done by six-thirty.
Well, it should take about ten minutes.
That's what I thought, so we start at six, that'd be good.
Fine with that. Anybody else? Good?
Six is fine.
I'm hearing, seeing a lot of heads, I should guess.
Six is fine.
So six o'clock on Thursday, the twenty-seventh.
Is there a way to put maybe two, two proposals on the board, one with a bond, one without? We just both make a decision? I think that's kind of the hang-up, right? It's a little border against it.
To do what? Again, I'm sorry.
Basically, basically two options. An option with the, I think four is kind of a standard. So both options would have four, ones with a bond, one without a bond, and we just vote on one.
Well, we can make, you can make the motion at night, yes.
Correct, okay, that's all I need.
To amend the, or whatever, you can make that.
Okay. But in terms of preparation for Eric, I, I obviously, I think we need to have some.
Well, I think if you're, if you're, for those that are in favor of the bonding, I think you need to have in mind the terms you're gonna require for the bond.
Okay.
Would be, you know, do you want to give it occupancy, I mean, to me, it seems logical, occupancy permit on your building, on your structure. If there's something else that's more meaningful to other people, that they work better. And do you want to base that on construction cost, or do you want to somehow base it on site cleanup demolition? And I don't know how you, you don't do that, but the real problem we have now apparently is steel in the air that we need to clean up. I don't know if we're worried about the underground work that was done. It may or may not be beneficial to the next owner of that property. Um, same thing with the doctor's office, that may be reusable to somebody else, it may need to be torn down, I don't know. And nobody knows but the next user of the property, so you'd have to have in mind what the terms of your performance bond you're looking for. I don't know personally just how to write that, I thought you had deeply involved, we're not against it. So, that would be up to those that are in favor to set those terms, or to bring those terms to the table, I would think. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. So.
You want the agenda for Thursday night?
Okay.
Oh, you want that on the agenda for Thursday night?
Yes.
The terms?
Yes, terms of the bond as well, yes. So a motion for that of some sort.
So that won't be changed. We're gonna go over terms.
I, it shouldn't be a yes or no, I mean, I, I don't see it being that far-fetched.
We'll see, making, you know, I think.
Or that, restrictive one or the other, I think it should be pretty quick to come.
Any chance we can move it up to five-thirty then?
I can't, I have.
Is that true?
No.
We'll get you out as quick as we can, Laurie. I, I don't foresee it taking that long. I don't think there's gonna be that many options of the bonding.
Yeah, I understand.
Honestly. So we'll probably need a motion under new business to set that special meeting, that proper?
Yes, Mr. Eric.
Make sure we come back to do that. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I told you this part.
On the airport. On the phone, sir, on the airport.
Um, on the agenda tonight is the resolution for the operation, to develop the operational agreement for the airport with the county, taking over the financial contribution and the, the operation and the functionality of the airport. Um, what's in your newsletter is a copy of what was changed since the last time you saw it. There were sections streken, and then three, the highlighted areas are what was added. And what was added in the, into the resolution, that's, and there's a clean copy on the agenda tonight for, for adoption, if you choose. Um, the, the property that we've, we've talked about multiple times, the interests of the city has been protected within the, the resolution, that if the airport were to go out of business, that the property is leased by the, the airport authority. That land would come back, that's owned by the city, would come back to us. And the co-owned property that is owned jointly between the county and the city is protected there also. Um, the, also the language added in that the, the new authority will be putting together an advisory board, an airport advisory board, which the city of Donald shall always have a seat and a member of that board. So we'll always have ongoing input into the, the future of the airport, be it the operations, budgets, all those sort of things. So, that's what the advisory board is gonna be there for. Um, the city also has options in case we need other operations that serve citizens that we do serve, i.e., say, out that way, our fire district goes out that way. If there was ever a need at some point that we, that would be a good idea to serve our community, or our fire district in some ways, that we have the option to be able to build something there. Um, or, obviously, working with St. Louis under Agawa, Gratch County Water Authority, we're looking, if you're looking for wells, and that would be a place that could possibly be of use, if it did not interfere with the airport operations, that, that option would be there for, for us and for, for St. Louis, because we, we share water. Um, and then, then lastly, that leased property, that, that, and businesses who would need to build at the airport for services, that an airport provides for, like logistics, manufacturing, and/or tourism, that, um, those things could be built. And obviously, those are, are, are important, because as, if the airport's gonna be self-sufficient in some way, that wherever you can get some revenue to, to generate at the airport that stays with the airport is gonna be important. So if you could find a business that would need the airport to build something that, that could generate money, to hopefully at one point make that, that the airport self-sufficient. And, uh, yeah, so that was the, the additions to the resolution. And as stated, that, um, once this, if this is approved, this just gives the, the airport authority, as it currently sets, the, the, basically, the outline to give to the attorney that the airport authority has hired to draw up the operational agreement, and the, um, the changing of the current airport authority into the new one, and then setting up the advisory committee. Um, and that has to be signed and approved also too, so, but this is the first major step, so.
Comments? Questions?
And that is on the.
Well, for you, yeah, go back. Personally, I think I find number eleven to be way too vague and too all-inclusive. I think anything for logistics, what would it cost, say logistics, manufacturing, or tourism?
I mean, twelve.
Twelve.
Why is it eleven, am I?
Yeah, on the clean copy, it's eleven. Oh.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Um, oh, yeah, because you know why, because eight was obstructing.
Okay. That just seems to be pretty broad. So that's, that was my main objection to that whole thing at this point, so. I don't know if anybody else finds that to be objectionable, but, and there's, you know, nothing in there about priorities if we need water at some point, I think that's a, a huge value. If we were to allow some manufacturing entity out there that needed water, and we also needed water for our citizens, you know, who's, who's got priority here? And, you know, who's, are those water rights of any value? Or are we just signing them over without anything for priority? I think that might be problematic down the road, it may not be, I don't know, but.
Well, I guess we could, you know, Chris is here, and Chris and I, I'm sorry, Chris Osterhoff is the Gratch County Administrator. And him and I have been working on, together on trying to put something together that we could all, most sides could agree with, to get us to the point of putting that operational agreement together. And I guess from that standpoint, we could, you know, Chris could talk to his board. You know, as we talk about the operational agreement, that could be something that's discussed, and I, I won't speak for you very, I'm sorry, Chris, but, um, what do you think about along those lines? Yeah.
Good evening, Chris Osterhoff, Gratch County Administrator. Um, as far as finding a base, is what we're looking for here, and Eric and I putting together this resolution. Um, and yes, we know that going forward, put into the contract, there's gonna be a lot more details that are, that need to be talked about. Contracts are more restricting than resolutions, so that's not something that, that is surprising to hear from you, not at all. Okay.
We can, like I said, it's not a dozen, but.
And that's fine, I just wanted to express my opinion on that. I, and I commend you, Chris and Eric both, from the original proposal that we saw several months ago, this is a vast improvement. It's much more like, I think, what we were all expecting, you know, two years ago, three years ago, when this whole process started. It's closer to what I anticipated originally, to be just a simple handing over the keys as far as management. I think it could have been done a lot less expense than the way we're going about it, but this is a vast improvement over where we started, so thank you for that.
Okay. Um, and then some good news. First, I, um, I just wanted to share that, from an audit standpoint, we've taken, we've flipped off another piece that's been finding for us, and that is our federal rewards written procedures. And I, I just put a copy of those in there, just so you have them. And that's been showing up on our audit findings for since two thousand and sixteen, and that is off there. So thanks to the, the team and everything, putting that together.
We worked on that.
That was our finance department, and, and, really do appreciate everything's been there. And, and the auditors have been very helpful with us putting that together, so we appreciate their.
It'd be nice to have that box checked.
Exactly. And then another good news, employee recognition. Uh, we have two individuals that have passed their FIRE one and FIRE two. Um, and they were presented their FIRE one, FIRE two certifications at the Academy commencement ceremony on February seventeenth, Stephanie Brown and Bailey Sutter. Um, both of them had to complete two hundred and forty hours each, and they did this mostly on nights and weekends over a six-month period, um, to secure this, and like I said, they can't become firefighters unless they pass that. So I, I appreciate their efforts, and, uh, if, if you, if you know a little bit about our, our fire division and the people that work for it, you're, you're doing it for the love of community, and, and you're not doing it, you're not doing it for the cash, that's for sure. So we do appreciate their efforts there. And then, um, next Thursday is the Gratch County Chambers Community Evening. Um, and if you'd like to attend that, please let myself or Sarah know, and we'll issue tickets for that, for that evening. Um, and then, as I close this out, I, I just wanted to let the commission know, um, our, as a staffer, our hearts a little, our little, um, um, said, uh, we've lost one of our coworkers, Kevin Hopner. He passed away this, over this last weekend, and our thoughts are a lot to his family and friends, so just wanted to let you know that, so.
Sorry to hear that.
Yep, and he was in our public works division, so. But, that's all I have. That's all.
That's all, plenty, thank you. Okay, I believe we have a motion on the table to accept the city manager's newsletter, so any final, last chance for comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion's received, so the court is received. Motion's approved, we've received it. Moving on, unfinished business, consideration of a resolution to authorize the council for Gratch County Airport Authority to begin preparation paperwork for the Gratch County Airport transition. Your pleasure.
Thank you, Doc.
Support. Motion support, any more comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Motion is carried, thank you. Best of luck, man. Uh, new business, consideration of a resolution to authorize the use of North State Street from the north side of Superior Street to Downey Street as needed for the Alma Farm Market each Saturday from six-thirty a.m. to one p.m., beginning May sixth and running through October twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three. Your pleasure.
Thank you, Doc.
Support. Motion support, comments or questions?
I, this may have been discussed at the meeting, but I wasn't here, was there a wire between this?
Well, um, toward the end of last year, we only had really one vendor showing up on Wednesdays. Um, and they have since, for the next two years, they're on a mission trip, obviously. So, uh, we had our vendor meeting with, and asked, okay, how many folks will be here every, you know, here on Wednesday? It's like a business, if you're gonna advertise, you're gonna be here on Wednesday, we need people showing up on Wednesday. And most of them, well, that's gonna be tough. Um, we've had requests, um, recently and probably in the last couple of years, could we bring it more toward the downtown area? Um, with being just a Saturdays, there was just no way we could try this, um, you know, try this event, doing it in the downtown area. Doing it twice a week, it'd just be too much. Um, the vendors have stepped up and said, hey, they'll help with, you know, setting up barricades and, and taking them down, and getting everybody set down there. Um, and I told them, well, we'll give it a shot. We can always go back to the property that we have there on Fire Avenue. Um, they're all, they're excited about it, so I'm hopeful that it's helpful. If it isn't, then, like I said, then we can go back to what we said, we give them, give them a shot and see if this is.
I think it started when we did the Alma Live in the farmer's market, it was downtown on a Saturday, they moved it in to the street.
It's basically a chamber of commerce function, so the request, I believe, is from the chamber, and we're just allowing them to use the street, so.
So it's which street again? That's.
Next, the hardware, the hardware in the Opera House, on State Street.
The street, yeah, but not downtown, it's.
Not on Superior, no.
Or State Street.
Yeah, I think so, okay.
How's it gonna look? Is there gonna be parking there, or?
They'll be basically using from these crosswalks to the north. And right now, with the number of vendors they have, they probably can fit everybody in, but then, yeah, yep. And they'll have that there to set themselves up. And then obviously, you'll have parking behind the hardware, you have parking behind the Opera Block, and then on State Street parking all around it. So is there additional liability, like that being out of the street, or is this not? No, because it's closed off. Now, we, we left open to traffic instead of. Let's make sure. Yep, yep.
Seems like with the paper, this might be a little more accessible.
I hope so, I mean, that's some of the content I've gotten is, but we'll give them a shot, and it doesn't cost us really anything from the city, and, and.
I just wondered about the street part, because they were not in favor of us putting concrete down where they are here, so that's why I asked.
No, folks, very good questions, yes.
Can I take it the hardware store is okay with it?
Yes.
Okay.
With any luck, it'll actually improve their business.
I don't know.
I mean, I, my experience in the past was, it used to be when it was located in that one part of downtown, it was a definite enhancement for several of the businesses down there, because you could easily walk in the door. So hopefully it'll serve that purpose once again.
Exactly, and if it's good, we'll keep it there.
Yep.
Awesome, okay.
So I believe there's a motion on the table for this, Rick? Did I get a motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Last chance for comments? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried, we have a farm market, once again, good deal. Now, we also need to consider a resolution to establish a special meeting on this Thursday, the twenty-seventh, at six p.m.
So move.
Support.
You need any further information on in that motion, as far as what the agenda's gonna be, or does that not matter at this point?
No, I think we should be on that.
Okay. All right, last chance for comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried, we have a meeting this Thursday, twenty-seventh, at six p.m., right here.
Probably gathering, Grant.
I mean, you see, Grant?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, you, yes. So we didn't take a motion to approve the submission or the support for the M E D C grant that was described earlier. Okay, we can motion support, comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no? Motion is carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, did I miss anything else? Any else? Um, okay, moving on to appropriations, anyone in favor of paying the bills?
Will we pay the bills?
Support.
Okay, any questions on those aforementioned bills? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed would be no? Motion is carried, and the bills should be paid, thank you. Commissioner, comments? Laurie, would you like to lead the talk tonight? Quick, Michelle.
Um, I'd like to publicly congratulate Eric and we on becoming the two thousand and twenty-two Tartan of the U.S.
Oh, thank you.
So I would like to come to the Chamber event on May fourth, where they will be presenting the Citizen of the Year for Alma Bracarage, Ithaca, and Saint Melus. So that's a fun night for our community. Our condolences go to all of you for the lost staff, coworker.
Andrew?
Congrats to Eric, and, yeah, also, yeah, my condolences to the lost.
Thank you. Roxanne?
Um, if you have a student turning five before, between September first and December first, you can start registering now for kindergarten at Alma Public Schools. Um, we will also be having a three-year-old and a four-year-old daycare and a tuition-based preschool. So if you're interested in any of those, please, hit my office or the superintendent.
preschool, so if you're interested in any of those, please give my office or the superintendent's office a call and get your kids signed up.
Wait for it.
Yeah, it is.
Throw in people. Danny, anybody wanna sign up?
Not yet. I got one just past that and one coming into it.
Maybe you had one this year.
Yeah, we had one, that was last year, so we're kidding.
Congratulations.
Just special thanks to the commission for the thoroughness in, in tonight's discussion. I think, you know, sometimes it's human nature when a process gets a little drawn out. Sometimes you, you kind of just breeze through the finish line. I think, I appreciate the thoroughness at the, at the finish line or near the finish line, hopefully. But I, I appreciate the thoroughness throughout that, and congratulations to Eric.
Okay. Roger?
This coming Saturday night at 7 o'clock at the Heritage Center is the Queen of Scots pageant. What is that time again? We have five girls vying for Queen of Scots and eight girls vying for Wee Queen. This is like a reunion, an old home week. We have girls who have been Wee Queens that are vying for Queen. We have two of the girls who are vying for Queen, who are currently on the board as first and second runners-up on the Queen's Court. So it's gonna be, gonna be a tough, but it should be, it's always a good time. It's fun. 7 o'clock, Saturday. And congratulations, Eric, well deserved, well, well deserved.
Sarah?
Congratulations to Eric, and nothing else from me, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I've said enough, mate.
And I'd add my congratulations, along with my condolences to the family and the team out the public works, the hard-working crew. It's never good news, but thanks to everybody, I appreciate it. Like Danny said, it's a very thorough discussion, it takes a long time, but I think good points are made, and we appreciate that. And I did wanna share, I had a note sent to me from Child Advocacy. They've got an art exhibit, Telling Their Stories 2023 Art Exhibit. Opening night is May 1st from 4:30 to 6 p.m. at the Alma Community Arts Center, which is a great place to visit. If you haven't been there yet, this is a perfect opportunity to get acquainted with it, all kinds of fun things going on down there next to the Strand. There's other fun things coming up soon, I think. Roger, you forgot to mention that.
I don't know, I don't know if I can plug it or not.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I'm pretty used to Roger plugging in a front row, we have the director here.
I'm sure, you hit this.
We got the boss here.
Plug it, yes.
This, this one thing you can do.
Official opening, and your daughter's one of our wonderful choreographers, but it opens the second weekend in May. So middle two weekends in May, come and see it, it's great.
Tickets are available, when, when will it be available? They are available now, even.
Cool.
Also, Laurie, I forgot to mention that tomorrow's the open house at the Alma Public Library, that they, I believe it's 3:30.
He did it 3:30, no?
3:30, happy 3:30.
Very good, thank you very much. With that, we'll welcome the floor in public, members of the public, if anybody'd like to.
I do, I have something to say, but I'm.
Please go to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have up to five minutes.
I can only take a couple minutes. I'm Jan Bunten, county commissioner, and District 2 here in Alma. And I just wanted to let you know that every year, the sheriff puts out, it's called Gratchit County Sheriff Office 2022 Annual Report. We've been getting these reports ever since I've been on the board, 23 years. And usually what I do is give a copy to each one of my districts that I represent. Unfortunately, I put this in a bag with some water, and it wrecked it. And I'm not gonna give it to you, but I wanted to at least let you know, I'm gonna drop off a couple copies, and usually, if you guys all want one, I can give you all one if you want, or usually they'll make them right there for you if you ever want one. But something that was different this time is that the sheriff, which I thought was a wonderful idea, took some pictures and put pictures in here. And some of them are, the best, one of them was him swearing on the dog. And then there's, I thought that was kind of cute. And then, but anyway, there's three pages of pictures. The only thing I mentioned to him was, it'd be nice to know what their names are, because sometimes you see them and, and don't realize that they're part of the sheriff's office. So anyway, we'll drop this off either tomorrow or the next day, a couple of copies for you. And what it's gonna tell you is everything that went on in the county, every, every run that they did, from giving tickets to maybe part of the ambulance, or drug bust, or, I mean, unfortunately, one of the things that he's had to do this last year, or a couple of years now, that fentanyl, is they have the police squad when somebody's done an overdose of fentanyl. And one of the other things that he does, it starts back to 2012, 2013, so it gives you a chance to kind of see what the difference is from year to year. There's, there's just everything in here, there's several pages, as you can see. And I apologize, I put this in that bag, it was by my door, I had a bottle of water down there, and I know how I put it in there, it tipped over, and I just thought, I cannot give this to you like this, it's just kind of horrible. So I'll make sure you get a couple copies tomorrow.
If, Jan, if they make it available electronically, that'd be great, they could just, Eric or somebody, if you could get it to him, he could email it out to all of us, that'd be my preference.
Oh, yes, well, it's on, yeah, it is online. If you go into the commissioners, you'd have to go into county, if you want, do this, go county commissioner, and put in, our last meeting would have been, I'm just having to think, the second, the first Tuesday of this month, yeah, the first Tuesday of this month, and it is in there, I believe it's at the very end of our packet. And you can take, I don't know how to do that, otherwise I'd do it for you.
We'll find the link, I'm sure.
We'll get it, yeah.
Okay, then, if you want, if you call the clerk, call Angie Thompson, there, the clerk, she will also, she and you will help you on how to do that. Or send it to you, too. But anyway, I think you'll really enjoy, well, I don't know, the interesting part of it is to know what's going on in your county. There are some sad things in there, like breaking and entering and stuff like that. So there's just a lot of everything in there that, anything you wanna know about the county. And this is a report that you'll get every year, for me.
Okay.
Thanks, Jan. Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else like to address the commission? Please go to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Steve Weber, 1136 Charles Drive, St. Charles, Illinois, 60174, once again, representing Soon Cannabis. I just wanted to touch on some of the things that makes cannabis industry very unique from other industries, especially as it relates to funding, borrowing money. We are not able to, for the most part, get money from a traditional lending institution, like a bank, for a construction loan. So I think a lot of the things that are, the cannabis world is very unique in, in many ways. That's why the state issued the licenses, and then they, they left it up to the municipalities to decide whether they want one store, two store, four stores, because it is extremely, extremely unique. And one of the things in the cannabis space, from being an Illinois operator, once we came to Michigan, was the, you know, you wanna be able to operate a store in a very safe,